Sorry, we're testing. One, two, three. Can you hear me? Sorry, I'm here. Having a little difficulty.
Can we start?
No, yeah, they're, they're having issue with audio. There's some issue with audio right now. So.
All right. Is Tae Do on yet?
Hi, is
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, good. Okay, so we have everyone.
Yeah, so everyone is here. Okay. Okay. Ready to, is it okay to start? All right, stand by mayor.
Can you hear me now? This is Charlie.
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, good.
It's a nice, it's a nice headset.
Thank you. I asked, can you hear me? I didn't ask you, can you see me?
All right, so can I start?
Almost, okay. Almost. I'll count you down like normal.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council, so, 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 agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting to order right now, seven oh seven PM, Wednesday, July eight, twenty twenty, roll call.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Present.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
All council members are present.
Thank you so much. Nice to have salute to the flat would be Vice Mayor Ho, invocation would be City Attorney, and please stand. Put your right hand.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing.
City Attorney? Evocation?
We probably have to unmute.
City Clerk? Can you inform our City Attorney, please?
That he's muted. City Attorney, you're currently muted. I can't seem to unmute him.
Can he do by himself?
You should be able to do by himself.
I cannot hear anything. There it is. Okay, am I, I'm okay now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Dear Heavenly Father, we humbly bow our heads as we gather here this evening to do the important business for the city of Westminster. We're full of gratitude for those who serve our community, especially our police and fire departments, who reach out to help save and protect our lives. We ask the special blessing this evening upon the City Council that they will act with wisdom and insight and do that which is best for all Westminster. We say these things in thy name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Next, any report from City Attorney? Yes, we have one item that's come up since the posting of the agenda that we want to bring to your attention. I recognize that item five point four is the proposed contract with the city manager. However, in reviewing the situation with the Chief Lotterback, we have determined that the background check for the city manager position has not been completed. And as is our custom procedure, we normally would not offer a contract for an employee until such time as a fully complete background check has been completed. And especially given the fact that the city manager is such an important position, and in light of some of the controversy that's arisen, it's important that we complete that background check. It is therefore our request that we take this matter off the agenda and allow a background check to be more fully completed. And once this is completed, we'll share that report with the City Council. Then at such time in the future as it's done, we'll bring this matter back to the City Council. But it is our recommendation at this point in time, in light of the failure to complete the background check, in the important nature of this appointment, this matter be continued until such time as we've completed that. All right. Thank you so much for that. Any report from City Clerk?
Yes, thank you. Staff is recommending, I we have quite a few members of the Home Task Force present. So we'd like to ask that item seven point two be moved up to after oral communications or prior calendar.
So may I have the motion to move that item forward before oral communication?
Motion to move forward.
So we have the motion and a second to move the last item, what's the, okay, item seven point two forward.
Yes, and that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Doe, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Get that motion three, five to zero to move item seven point four after oral communications. And since item yeah, so it'll be seven point, I'm sorry, seven point two.
All right. Next, expert communication, we don't have any. So next, oral communication. Chief Clerk, please.
Yes, hi. So we did receive oral communications. I would defer to the City Attorney, though, if I should read the ones that were received for five point four.
Yeah, let me make it real clear. First off, to the public and those who make public comments, item five point four has been removed. The council made no objection to that, so there's not going to be a consideration this evening for the city manager's contract. However, if people have want to make comment, they're welcome to make comment. To the extent that you've received emails, they should be read into the record, even though they will be moot at this point in time because we're not going to consider that item this evening.
Very well. I did receive comments for a variety of items, so I will start with five point four.
All right.
I received, there's an email received from Frank Tran. It states that immediately upon learning the name of the individual slated to be hired by the council at the July eighth city manager.
They're cutting out.
And now, my name is City Clerk.
Am I? Oh. Okay. Let's
Need to increase the white screen.
I would say it's probably because there are a few unmuted besides myself, so it's going to keep picking up on the additional noise, so. Mute everyone. Is that better? Should be better. See, so again, this was from Frank Tran, and he lists reasons based on publicly accessible records why Chung Thay is not is not qualified for the city manager position. Stated that he has absolutely no experience as a city manager or even as an assistant city manager. He was working for the city of Stanton for months and was forced to leave with a separation agreement. And coincidentally, the recruiter Bob Hall was interim city manager for the city of Stanton in two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Thai worked for City of Monterey Park from January two thousand and fourteen to April two thousand and seventeen, and his title was Director of Management Services. He was placed on administrative leave by the city. A copy of the letter is attached so that alleged misconduct by Mr. Thai could be investigated. There's a copy of a letter attached regarding an amended leave order. And on April twenty seventh, the city of Monterey Park formally terminated his employment with the city. Essentially, he was fired from Monterey Park. He speaks about Mr. Thai's own sworn testimony from deposition taken on January twenty four, two thousand and nineteen, in which Mr. Thai admitted several policies that were violated, particularly for credit card usage by city-issued credit card. Failed to disclose that he was friends with and attended the wedding of a representative of a company. That was ordered, an agreement at the time. Made improper purchases of phones. Failed to disclose City of Monterey Park during the interview process. And left Stanton only after four months under a separation agreement. And that Mr. Thai has filed a lawsuit against the city of Monterey Park on March sixth, two thousand and eighteen, including a demand for a jury trial alleging retaliation defamation. He also, he states that this is the same Chung Thay that the council is considering to hire as the city manager. He suggests that the City Council review the provided documents and withdraw the offer. In addition, Bob Hall and Associates, he feels did not do a good job and that he should have checked with the city of Stanton about the employment there and reference checks from past employers of candidate before recommending the city for an interview. Until now, he hopes the City Council has not known the information. And so the decision now will show clearly whom you're working for, the public or your own agenda. And he wishes you luck, awake, and make a right decision for the people. Again, that's from Frank Tran. Next one is from Dana Butler. And she stated, please exercise common sense and do not hire anyone with known pending litigation with former employers. Indicated that Mr. Thai is in active litigation with his immediate former employer and had settled a claim with another. And in today's employment market, there must be qualified candidates without substantial and known issues to apply for the job. She said that the search firm did not do the council any favors by bringing this candidate forward. And she advised that you get rid of the search firm and this candidate and start over. She linked a link to the Voice of OC article and says that even though she is a city of Orange resident, she cares deeply about all local leadership, now more than ever before, and the need for leadership integrity in government is great. Again, that's from Dana Butler. Received another one from Scott Piker. To apologize for not being able to attend due to our conflicts and stated that he would like to express deep concerns over the potential hiring of Mr. Chu Thai as the city, as the Westminster city manager would like to while he thinks it's commendable that the city is seeking to hire a person of Vietnamese descent for the city manager position, he does not think that Mr. Thai is the right person for the job. For starters, Mr. Thai is objectively not qualified for the position. He's never been a city manager or assistant city manager or even an interim before at any city during his twenty years of public sector employment. He feels that should be a disqualification as Westminster cannot afford to hire someone who will be learning on the job while the city is in such dire financial and legal circumstances. Difficult decisions need to be made, and there's nothing in his employment history which indicates he's qualified for the job. In addition, his recent employment is also very concerning. He notes that Mr. Thai has been fired from his two previous jobs in the public sector, both in Stanton as well as Monterey Park, and currently engaged in a three million dollar lawsuit with Monterey Park. He states that the fact that Monterey Park is fighting the lawsuit instead of settling out of court should indicate how valid the city thinks his termination was. Even giving him the benefit of the doubt, it would be completely irresponsible for the council to hire Mr. Thai before that case is settled. The last thing Westminster needs is another disgruntled former employee who sues the city. This is a giant red flag that cannot be ignored. According to media reports, there were apparently forty-two other applicants for this position. And he finds it difficult to believe that Mr. Thai is the best of the bunch. Again, he's sympathetic to the desire to hire someone of Vietnamese descent for such an important position in the city, but is afraid that Mr. Thai is simply a very bad choice. That again is from Scott Piker. This one is from Dao Tran. Yes, Dao Tran. And it states, I saw on the agenda that the council will vote on a contract to hire a new city manager, Chung Thay. I believe some I have done some research on open source forum regarding Mr. Thai and believe he's a good choice for the city and will do a good job bringing the city together in this difficult time. I hope that you all vote to hire him so he can hit the ground running. I also heard some of the controversies about his lawsuit. And he's a victim and sue the city as a plaintiff for its wrongdoing. It would be very un-American and unfair to disqualify this good candidate based on a private dispute between him and his employer. Let the courts handle this matter and don't listen to accusations without evidence. You have a high qualified city manager candidate here and should hire him. Do the right thing and get Westminster moving forward. Again, that's from Dao Tran. This one is from Thomas Lamb. And it was addressed to dear Vice Mayor Ho, but CC to the rest of the council. As a Vietnamese like you, I'm disappointed when reading your comments on New Viet Daily News about the hiring of Mr. Thai. The Vietnamese community would be proud to see a city manager of Vietnamese descent running Westminster, also known as the Vietnamese capital outside of Vietnam. This is history in the making, and I ask you seize this moment instead of being non-committal or scared of your opposition who will never support you. These people always oppose you and your two colleagues. It's all politics and nothing else. I admire your work on the council along with the mayor and Councilman Charlene Nguyen. You three need to stick together to get anything done in the city. You have such an incredible support mandate from the results of the recall just three months ago. Use it. Don't be intimidated by just a few loudmouth critics who are the same political enemies all along. They have lost. They have no credibility. Thank you for hearing me out. Please support hiring Mr. Thai. Please be strong and be united. And again, that's from Thomas Lamb. And the last one for five point four. This one is from Tony Buie, and it says, dear Mayor, City and City Council, I learned that you're about to make an important decision for a city manager of our city. It's important, it's a very important decision, and I trust people and trust five of you to select one that will sincerely serve the interest of the Westminster residents. All residents value liberty from totalitarian regime, justice, and transparency in all aspects. I strongly suggest that you all find I strongly suggest that you all will find a candidate with the following qualifications. Knowledge and management, diplomatic skills, listen to many groups, wholehearted mind to serve for the interests of the community rather than, rather than a special interest group. Trustworthy with ethical background, adheres to the casualty casually casualty law. I learned about Mr. Thai's experience in another city. All five of you have to use your wisdom to overcome the fake news in the newspaper and to get away from distorted information from prejudice groups. USA is a mixing pot with equal opportunity for different races, ethnics, races, ethnic, or religious background to make America great for the next generations. I support your final decision. And that's again from Tony Buie. So that's five point that was five point four, and this is from seven, this is for seven point two, which is the homelessness task force item. And this is a letter from the Kennedy Commission. And it states, the Kennedy Commission is a broad-based coalition of residents and community organizations that advocates for the production of homes affordable for families earning less than twenty-seven thousand annually in Orange County. Formed in two thousand and one, the commission has been successful in partnering and working with Orange County jurisdictions to create effective housing and land use policies that has led to the new construction of homes affordable to lower-income working families. The commission would like to commend the city and homelessness task force for its leadership and commitment to addressing homelessness. We support the homelessness task force's recommendations for outreach, prevention, and diversion, emergency shelter, rabid rehousing, and affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. The creation of new affordable housing will help meet the city's existing housing needs, and it should be it should continue to be a strategy to address homelessness. The commission looks forward to partnering with the city to increase affordable home opportunities for lower-income households in the city. Please keep us informed of any updates and meetings regarding strategies to increase affordable homes for lower-income households in the city. And then there's contact information provided. That is all that I have for the ecomments that are received, and these are available on the city's website, hyperlinked to the agenda. So at this time will be oral communications. For anyone who would like to speak, you'll receive five minutes per speaker. At this time, I would ask that you would raise your hand if you're logged on and would like to speak. And we do have a speaker. Okay. Deborah, first speaker is Deborah Mariscal.
Good evening, council members. This is Deborah, also known as Deborah Mariscal, Westminster, California. To the attorney's office, I would say thank you very much for postponing this so that a full background check can be done. I know in the private sector, it's not normally done until an offer has been extended and accepted. And I know that depending on what happens in that in that background check can, can take a little bit of time. And Mr. Thai, if you happen to be on the meeting with us, I commend you for wanting to to increase your career and to move forward. However, our city is at a crossroads. We are financially not that stable at the moment. And we need somebody that has proven experience so that you can get us through the tough times ahead. Again, I commend you for wanting to, you know, push forward in your career. If you were applying for an assistant city manager position, I would be fully supportive of that, but as a as a city manager without that actual experience, I think it would be really tough for you. My biggest concern is that whoever comes into this position, if we fail, what will happen to the city of Westminster if we file bankruptcy? Would that mean that all of the city employees would disappear? What, what would that mean? And I don't know the answer to that, so maybe somebody can enlighten me. Thank you so much for all that you guys are doing and praying for the right decision. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next speaker is David Johnson.
Hello, my name is David Johnson, member of the community. I was I'm a commissioner of the that was appointed from community services to attend the homelessness task group or task force. And I just want to say it was a successful task force. I'd like to thank Councilmember Tae Do for bringing the subject up. Councilmember Sergio Contreras for recommending the task force and all five members for approving that and for appointing people. A lot of people participated. There was a ton of research done. And I'd like to most specifically thank the staff members that attended and spent a lot of time on this and gave a lot of input. This is a very serious matter. As you know, our homelessness population in the city has more than doubled. And a lot of the cities around us are moving forward with different action plans. And it's time for us to do so as well. It's pretty comprehensive plan, and I look forward to the presentation from two of our members later today. If you have any questions, I am one of many people that would be willing to answer questions. And I just want to very much encourage you to, you know, with everything else that's going on, to put this at the, the highest priority for our city. It's something that is, has been needed for many years now. So thank you for your attention and for supporting this initiative.
Okay, thank you so much. Next speaker is Adam Buttons. Mr. Buttons.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is Adam Buttons, Westminster resident. First off, I want to say that these times are very unusual and very trying in this time of our country's history. And also for the city of Westminster. Um, it can't, it's not easy being in the positions that you're in. You guys are making some very serious decisions about the future of this, of this town. I know that in the past, you know, I have come up and I have spoken. And I've been critical. And a lot of times, you know, when you don't see change that's for the better, you can get very frustrated. But I want to speak tonight, and I want to come from a different angle. And that is, it's about working together as a team. And right now, this, the city needs to heal and needs to move forward. And people need to start working together. We need to put our differences aside and do what's best for the citizens of this, of this town. Especially due to this situation we have with COVID nineteen. A lot of people are hurting right now. A lot of people are suffering. I pray that all of you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Contreras and Councilman Doe, that you guys can work together and put whatever animosities that you guys have towards each other and think about the whole collective, the greater good of our community. And negotiate. And let's start thinking about the future. I hope that we get a good city manager that is qualified for the job. That's not going to put us in a position where there's going to be a liability issue down the line. It's, it's crazy with what I hear about how people want to handle problems when they don't get their way. I do not believe in protesting and causing havoc because we don't get our way. We need to learn to work together and figure out how to way to move forward. Because, gentlemen and ladies, life is too short. So I just wanted to say to all of you, thank you for serving this community. And I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm not here to point fingers at you. I'm just here as a citizen that wants to work with you. Because I'd rather be part of the solution than be part of the problem. Thank you very much for listening to me, and please, by Godspeed, make the right decision for the betterment of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last this is the last call for anyone who would like to speak. Okay. Terry Rains.
Good evening. Good evening, Terry Rains. Westminster, I'm a little surprised about the background check, but I'm relieved that it was delayed to do a further check and a detailed check. But I'm still going to speak on it tonight. The single most important and possibly devastating decision this City Council can make tonight is whether or not to hire Mr. Chu Thai as the city manager. According to statements made by, to the media by Mayor Ta and others, including Mr. Thai, this is all but a done deal. I'm hoping not. One can easily conclude from their statements that Mr. Thai's leading qualification is that he is Vietnamese-American and therefore would be the first ever Vietnamese-American city manager. I have been accused of being racist in some Vietnamese media because I opposed hiring him. Now deliberately and falsely accusing another person of being racist in order to gain some form of advantage is definitely playing the race card. I don't care what ethnicity somebody is. I really don't. I just care that they're qualified and the best choice for the job. One has to wonder what is really going on here. There is most certainly a hidden agenda. How could Mr. Thai even have the audacity to apply for this position? Information has been illegally leaked by certain members of this council to their gang. The Vietnamese media have reported that there were forty-two applicants, six passed on to council from Bob Hall, and two finalists, Mr. Thai and somebody from San Clemente. The disclosure of this information outside an open session City Council meeting by anyone on this council or Mr. Thai is illegal. Mr. Lan Quoc Nguyen, an elected official and one of the gang's attorneys, even shared this information in a public post on Facebook. I reminded him, and I'm reminding you that this violates your oath of office and the law. You can expect repercussions as can those who made false statements against me. I and others have provided voluminous and compelling evidence as to why Mr. Thai should not be hired, all obtained via public records. Some on this council have chosen to ignore that evidence, bringing back Mr. Thai to get his side of the story. Mr. Thai has absolutely no experience as city manager or even assistant city manager. Currently, he's not even working in the public sector. His public sector experience is only in finance and related support services. He has worked at eight different cities over twenty-five years, all of which are much smaller than Westminster. His positions have all been lateral with little to no advancement. And the scope of his duties and direct management experience is extremely limited. He was fired from the last two cities he worked for. He was fired from the last two cities he worked for, Stanton and Monterey Park. He was forced to leave Stanton under a separation agreement after only four months on the job, confirmed by Mr. Ty's own sworn testimony. A public's records request is being sent to the city of Stanton for a copy of that agreement. And according to California case law, it supports disclosure of that document through the California Public Records Request Act. Mr. Ty was fired from the city of Monterey Park in April 2017, and he is currently embroiled in a massive lawsuit. He filed against the city almost a year later. The city is vigorously defending itself. And if there were any merit to Mr. Ty's allegations, the city would have entered into a settlement agreement with him long ago. Under oath, Mr. Ty admits to violating city policies, not disclosing a personal relationship. Slash conflict of interest with a bidder of a major contract with the city and not revealing his true employment history. Mr. Ty's admitted conduct is especially egregious, given he was responsible for the city's finances. His testimony establishes that he is invasive and does not accept responsibility for his actions. It illustrates his lack of management skills and gross incompetence. It is obvious Mr. Ta Ty does not respect authority or rules, and it wouldn't be a stretch to assume he would have that same disregard for the law. The LA District Attorney opened an inquiry into allegations that Mr. Ty accepted a bribe from a bidder competing for a city contract. Although the investigation concluded without criminal charges being brought against Mr. Ty. The closing report does state, quote, "Ty's statement is ambiguous as to whether a bribe took place," end quote. Vice Mayor Ho claims that Mr. Ty's background was not disclosed by the recruiter or the applicant. If that's true, that alone should void Mr. Ty's application and Mr. Hall's agreement. Regardless, you are all now fully aware. Yet here we are, unfriggin believable. How the hell, excuse me, can any of you justify hiring this guy? If you hire Mr. Ty, you will irreversibly destroy the reputation of the city of Westminster and, most importantly, the Vietnamese American community. Those of you that vote yes tonight or in the future will be held personally personally liable for any damage that comes from his employment with the city. Look up the term negligent hiring. It will be known to all that you hired someone based on race and not qualifications. Which could open the city up to costly lawsuits by other qualified applicants and or city staff. To those of you opposed to hiring him, do not abstain. Vote no to protect yourselves going forward. I implore you all to do the right thing for our city, for our residents and our employees. When the time comes, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roger Mendrum.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I had to unmute my my phone after you unmuted me. Good evening. This is Roger Mendrum, resident of Westminster. Thanks for having us speak and our thoughts on this tonight. And just like before the meeting on Monday, I just want to express my strong opposition of your possible hiring of Mr. Chu Tai. I realize by now, after the Monday meeting and and by now you've made your decision. I can only hope and pray that you're making the right decision and and having some patience and finding the right candidate because this gentleman is is not ready. They're not ready for this. And I'm just going to keep it, keep it quick like that and just to document my opposition of this. And we'll we'll let everything continue here. So. Another thing I'd like to say is I want to really appreciate the the hard work and the dedication that our our fellow residents and the staff put into the homelessness task force. Hopefully that gets some resolutions and helps people live a better life and. Continue to to work with your city and work with our community. And I really wish we could all work better together, including the city staff and the city council and and everybody. And we really have a good community here. So we we really need to come together and work together. I've made a lot of good friends and a lot of people that really care about the city. Some of the people from your email that you read were talking like like we're bad people, like we're enemies. Or we're in opposition to the city council members and we just want the right things done. We just care. We just want the right things done. So I'll keep it at that and have a good evening and Godspeed. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Claudia Ann Orgs.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I haven't been able to attend any of the Zoom meetings prior, but I have been taken up. I was made aware of the intent to or the candidate that was brought forward. For this position that we have now. The thing that really bothered me that made me come out tonight is the fact that everyone is starting to scream racist or racism towards some of our community. As a person of color myself, I feel that we are not being careful. About, we all have expectations and we all have wish lists and representation matters. And I believe that it is important. But to attack members of our community based on those criterias that we we like to call people racist if we don't agree with them. I think that's really harmful. And on top of the fact that this person, this candidate that has come forward. He doesn't have the qualifications that a city manager needs to possess. I am by far not educated on what all the criteria needs to be. But on what has come forward and what I've been able to read on my own independently, he doesn't have them. What I'm also concerned is we're spending a lot of time on this one person. Did we not have any other applicants? Did we not have any other candidates that were well qualified? I mean, we all have wish lists of what we'd want this person to have. And is this the only person that was available for the job? If so, I'm a little saddened that we obviously as a city need so much help that nobody wants to help us. I think what we need to really do is go back and figure out who can provide everything we actually need. I think if we do have other candidates that were presented to our board. That they need to go back and look at that and see if there's any way that there's somebody there who can help us. That actually has had prior experience managing a city, especially a city of the size of ours and the. I guess the baggage that comes with it because we all have to agree that our city has baggage. And who is well qualified and equipped to help us with all that we have and all that we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the last call for anyone else who would like to raise their hand and speak. Being none, I don't have any additional speakers.
All right. So thank you so much for that. Next, we have consent calendar. All matters, least under the consent calendar, I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless member of the city council or staff request. The specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. So may I have a motion? So may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have the motion made by Councilmember Contreras and second by Councilmember Doe. Roll call vote please.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Yeah, that carried five to zero to approve the consent calendar.
Next, we have regular business 5.1 revision to the city council meeting schedule for the remainder of the year 2020. So may I have a motion? I move approval.
I second that.
Mayor, could we read off those basis for the record so people have an understanding what that looks like? Maybe the city clerk can go over those.
City clerk, please.
Yes, absolutely. So staff is requesting that we cancel the second meeting in August, which is August. Second meeting in September, which is.
I'm sorry, you're cutting out again. Could you start at the beginning again? Sorry about that.
Absolutely. Okay. So staff is requesting that we cancel the meeting of August 26 and September 23. Those are the second meetings in August and September. Generally, there's lack of business during that time. November 25, there is a request for that date. It's the it's the day before Thanksgiving. And then December 23 is basically the week, the couple of days before Christmas. Which we generally cancel that second meeting in December.
Normally, I would object, but given that we had a pretty good process of placing items on the agenda, I don't see a problem with this item. I'll second.
Thank you. So that's motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras. Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to cancel the regular meetings of August 26, September 23, November 25, and December 23, 2020.
All right, next item 5.2 summary of small busy assistant. So may I have a stop report?
If I may, I I think we were trying to move the task force up.
The the 7.2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, so 7.2, yes.
Okay, very perfect. So I really am just going to turn this over to two of our task force members. We have had a really dedicated team of 14 total people, including five that were appointed by the council. As well as others that were appointed by Eddie Manford, our city manager at the time. Representative. Different organizations and and groups within the community that put in a lot of hard work and volunteer hours to get to this evening. So with that, I would like to introduce two of our members that are here to present to you tonight. And then we have a number that are also sitting in the audience to answer questions and help field, you know, whatever information voids they can. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Aaron Bull and to Mark Lawrence. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you. But thank you. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to to Mr. Mayor and the city council. For the honor to present this and to be part of the homelessness task force, to be a part of the solution to the homelessness crisis that we're experiencing. I'd also like to say thank you to the task force members and staff. An amazing amount of work went into this and I'd just like to personally say thank you to each one as well. I we also want as a task force to recognize that the mayor of the city and the city council members. You have recognized the crisis and we understand that you are seeking a solution. To for the best interest of this community, its residents, and those struggling with homelessness. The goal of the task force we decided is to reduce homelessness in Westminster. It's the task force ambition that all appropriate resources and efforts, as identified in this report, be utilized to achieve this goal. Including navigation, shelter and long-term housing options and community engagement. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mark. It's for him to bring a framework and a background on how we came to our recommendations.
Thank you, Pastor Bull. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. A little bit of background on the homelessness task force. Although the causes of homelessness vary, the task force response to homelessness has been based on a housing continuum. As described by the United Way. We believe social services and support are often as critical as housing itself. An achievable path towards stable housing must be based on the unique circumstances involved. Thus, the following is a brief look at the housing continuum. I E outreach, number one, making connections with people. Examples of that simply would be city net services, Orange County outreach and engagement, Orange County mental health. Westminster Family Resource Center, Westminster School District Parent and Family Engagement Specialists. And of course, the Westminster Police Department Homeless Liaison Officer. Number two, prevention and diversion. Get out there and find people that are imminent risk of becoming homeless and try to reduce that before they do become homelessness. Examples of that would be finding resources for individuals and families, sourcing the affordable housing options. Linking people to available resources. Number three, an emergency shelter. Reducing the impact of homelessness on the community through a temporary residence for those experiencing it. Examples, the courtyard, Santa Ana Armory, the rescue mission. Number four, rapid rehousing. Funding for short-term rental assistance with support services, leading to increased self-sufficiency. Examples of that Westminster Housing Authority, homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, Interval House. Families Forward, Serving People in Need, I E Spin. Number five, affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. These two types of cost effective, cost-effective housing with income restricted covenants. Limiting rent charged and keeping units affordable, very important. These include help from social services, community support services and case management. And just like the letter we received from the Kennedy Commission, wonderful, wonderful people. Examples, Delarosa on Beach Boulevard, Westminster Crossing on Westminster Boulevard. And Potter's Lane on Jackson Street located in Midway City. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, council members, for taking this time to appoint the members of this task force. We truly care about our community. We put a lot of time and effort into this. To all the members of the task force, thank you so much. It means a lot to our community. It's all yours, Aaron.
Thanks, Mark. I'd also like to, at this point, move into the actual recommendations. The task force supports the city's continued focus on the housing continuum, including outreach, prevention and diversion, emergency shelter. Rapid rehousing and affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. We all know that there has been efforts made and we want to to see that continue. The direct recommendations include the following: a navigation center. An emergency shelter. Referral points. Community engagement and funding. Starting with the navigation center, we recommend committing to either independently or in partnership with another city. A center for homeless residents that places them within the appropriate place on the housing continuum. The navigation center should be available to residents with verified community connections only. Support services will be established and coordinated by the designated service provider. And the center would have extensive knowledge regarding onsite and community resources. The navigation center will work collaboratively with city staff, community organizations and stakeholders. Next recommendation is an emergency shelter. We recommend committing to an emergency shelter, a temporary emergency shelter. The shelter will increase street exits and provide immediate solutions. The shelter would allow our city to comply with the Boise Court ruling, direction set from the federal judges. The shelter would utilize best practice, modern best practices, including a 24-hour wraparound service with controlled entry. The shelter would be low barrier but still include definite and specific rules of conduct. The operator should be contracted to provide all services. The shelter will be placed in allocation that minimizes impact on neighboring land use. Community support should be built through outreach augmented specifically by the operator. With annual operating costs estimated at $1.8 million, the task force strongly recommends partnership with neighboring communities and the county of Orange. The shelter will provide all law enforcement a more flexible way to enforce the current laws. The shelter could operate independently or in conjunction with the navigation center. The next item is is referral points. We recommend a designation of specific city staff and community organizations that serve as a referral system for homeless individuals and families. The referral process should include a screening as well as connection to the appropriate support resources, which might include the navigation center. The Westminster PD Homeless Liaison Officer could verify community connection and make determination of eligibility as well. And working with the navigation center will allow determination of the entry point on the housing continuum and bring help to the people in need specifically where they need it. Community engagement, one that I feel very passionate about. We recommend that immediate community outreach take place to educate residents and businesses about the homeless crisis. And how they should respond, including opportunities for partnership, collaboration and working with law enforcement. Outreach can take many forms, including community workshops, such as what the police department has done in other situations. Social media campaigns, mailers, websites, et cetera. We recommend empowering the community to combat homelessness. Workshops can be used to identify those that can contribute time and resources as a pathway to partnership as members of a community team. The task force asks you to. The task force asks you to consider a citizens advisory group for the emergency shelter contract provider, the contracted provider, which may include the option of trained citizen access points to place homeless people within the housing continuum. Understand their liability there, so there must be training and 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 yeah. Faith-based group has already made progress towards shared resources and should be encouraged to continue moving forward in partnership with the city. Advocating for support services and partnership within the community will reduce homelessness in Westminster, and it empowers the citizens to help. Funding, the task force recommends the city seek ongoing funding sources with federal, state, county, neighboring localities, corporations, nonprofits, and private entities. All funding opportunities should be evaluated and considered by the city of Westminster and the city council members. In conclusion, the homelessness task force presents the recommendations in this report for addressing homelessness within the city of Westminster. We ask that the city provides care and shelter with compassion and empathy to create a pathway to self-sufficiency, as well as encouraging positive community impact and engagement of law enforcement and enforcing the laws. We would like the city to empower the community to be involved in the process and work closely with community members, businesses, and community partners to implement recommendations. We understand that achieving these goals will require significant dedicated funding and other sources. It is imperative that these resources are identified and prioritized to end homelessness in our community. Again, thank you for the time that you've allowed us to present.
Well, I really, I really, I really impressed with the really detailed presentation, that outstanding and excellent report and presentation. I really, really appreciate that. I really want to sincerely thanks all the member of the committee, other task folks for working really hard. You know, I know that you spent a lot of time and you and you discuss. So I think this is a really good process. That's a good partnership between the city and a community. So I totally agree everything in the report. And with that, I'd like to move as recommended.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, please.
For the committee, discussions mark towards the committee. I know I agree with Mayor. I appreciate diligence and work you put together and the compassion and empathy that and leadership that was and being exemplified in this report. My question is, in terms of a location, what location did the committee, does it have recommendations or it just? I mean, what were, where are we looking at for a terms of a location? That's always something that's very controversial in our times.
Yeah, that's a good question from Councilmember Contreras. So any member from the committee could able to recommend? Please.
I can feel that for sure. We we decided not to recommend a specific location for for various reasons, one of which is more investigation had be had to be done. We suggested the concept as our first measure priority. And then from there, finding a location that would that would fit in our community.
I appreciate that. I hope that that would satisfy Councilmember Contreras' question.
Yeah, I I was hoping the committee would help identify a location. That's something that I know the mayor and everyone, we've all been looking for a location that would be suitable, given the size of our city and the proximity to school sites and business districts. And so I just wanted to see if there was some sort of insight or any sort of thoughts in terms of possible locations to recommend.
Yeah, I mean, the location for this kind of, you know, issue has been a concern. I think that for the past few years, even that I had I had opportunity to meet with other mayor from other city every time we discuss about the location for emergency shelter, you know. I mean, it seemed like like issues, it kind of not like easy to work with. So I hope you know that I'm City Council or community member or or our staff or member from this committee could able to come up with, you know, like a future rotation for emergency shelter. So that would be helpful. I agree with Councilmember Contreras, yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Sergio Contreras, this is David Johnson. I'd like to say everything Aaron said is accurate, but I'd like to expand on that a bit. If we partner with another city, there could be extra funding and extra efficiencies for doing that. So we should look into that, and we should do that before making a decision to do this all by ourselves. We could receive the extra funding hypothetically from Orange County for doing that. So I think that's step one. You may also want to consider whether to keep this committee or create a committee like it to continue this to stage two. Thank you very much.
Well, at this point here, I I know that there is a recommendation from our staff to disband Westminster Homeless Task Force. I believe that they mentioned that the the works need to be done. But to this point, I think is, at this point here, they feel satisfactory to for the council to move forward. But before I second this motion to the mayor, I also want to thank the homelessness task force team. I know that you have, you all have had the wholeheartedly and efforts looking into the different plans and recommended to the city council. And clearly enough that if we look at the council, I mean, the the report today, we can see that, you know, it's outlined with the introduction, goal, background, and, you know, give all kind of details that for the city council to look into. So, you know, I I appreciate and applaud you for, you know, the good work that the team effort, and I'm sure that the city council will appreciate that. We we want to let you know that we heard you loudly and clearly, and we'll take this forward. And with that, I second it to the second motion to.
Yeah, I yeah, I looked into the report, and I mean, like, I feel like, you know, all the member of this committee, if they want to continue, I would not mind for the committee to continue, but it's still up to the council. If, you know, all the member of the committee continue, want to have the meeting, continue, want to give our new idea, I don't mind. So I mean, I willing to revise my my motion to approve item A. It mean that I receive and file all the recommendation. But if the committee want to continue that, yes, I'm okay with that. I totally okay with that. If that, I agree, I'd like to modify my motion.
Yeah, I would second that and add that, you know, I think they brought us here. They have some good input, and I think finding, taking a step further and making it beyond just a report on the shelf that we have some sort of action steps, maybe they could help with the implementation component if they're willing to do. I'd be supportive of that, Mayor.
Before that, can I ask staff why your recommendation to disband Westminster Homeless Task Force? Can you, can any one of you give us the reason why?
Sure. This is Alexa, and I've evaluated the, you know, the the purpose of the task force and and what Eddie had brought forward, and they've completed that task. There's also some other considerations, you know, regarding the membership of the task force, who may feel differently as to whether or not they want to continue. I suspect, you know, a number of our community members want to remain very much engaged, and I want to make sure that we can facilitate that engagement as best we can. Sometimes there are challenges that come with setting formal meetings with agendas and minutes and all that kind of stuff. When, you know, to some degree, I think we kind of want to unleash this group to be out there in the community and doing things. And then I think we also have some other members of the task force that were, they joined us to get to this point. We've got a number of members that are experts in the field. So, but I absolutely think it's, you know, worth pulling the group who would want to stay a member. I suspect we'll have those that drop off. Or, you know, there's, there's other ways that that we can look at it. But, you know, I'm certainly open to trying to, you know, make whatever the council wants to do work and and keep groups together if they would like to remain on board and and work forward with what they can contribute.
Yes, so I hope that it will continue. So I think that I already have my motion. I revised my motion, yeah, for the committee would continue. Okay.
I I have another question on that.
Yeah.
Let's say that we continue what you have Westminster Homeless Task Force, the team that we have. And Alexa just mentioned that for some might drop from the team. If the if those people who want to, you know, to get out, should we appoint another members to be on the task force? Or we just let, you know, whoever lap over, then then we'll continue with this.
Well, you know.
Alexa.
There, there are only five appointed members of the task force from council. So if some of those members chose not to continue, then I think that would make sense that that the council would appoint a replacement. I don't know if the attorneys want to weigh in on that. But certainly, I mean, if you want to, you know, solicit additional volunteers and and add to the group, if, you know, depending on how many stay, that might be a consideration. Yeah.
Okay. It's totally, it's totally appropriate to fill the vacancies by council appointment.
I think we should continue with the practice we use to create the committee.
I have questions. I have questions.
Councilmember Doe, yes, please.
Um, okay, so I look at the recommendation, so I I haven't heard anybody that's saying that the given staff direction to do anything about these recommendations yet. So so when we vote for this motion, so basically the city, interim city manager is going to pick up this package of construction and gonna start systematically figure out a way to achieve these recommendations. Is that what I'm hearing, or it's just a routine file? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I appreciate that Councilmember Doe mentioned that. And I think that based on the report, I think the committee, they list all the recommendation, you know. So I hope the interim city manager that she go, she goes to have the meeting with the department head and, you know, come up with all the strategy or come up with the plan and work on it and bring it back.
Mayor, if I if I might.
Yes, please.
Yes, Alexa and I have been working closely with Garden Grove in the last couple of weeks, and we are looking at very, they've invited us to go look at the Buena Park facility in which they've invited the council as well, and I will be trying to schedule you in that. So yes, we are work, looking forward and hoping to work in a partnership because it is a very costly thing, as you all know. So yes, we are doing that. I believe Alexa is also working with brokers to see if there's locations either in our city or in Garden Grove. So we we are moving forward with this.
And I would interpret the direction by the council to give is giving staff the direction to now take these recommendations and begin to implement them.
Okay. Can we, can we get a date on that, Sherry? Can we, as the council, can we have a date on that? Among two weeks?
It was, it was in the next two weeks. So I asked Lynn to reach out to.
Okay.
And get some dates from you.
So you're going to be on the on the agenda of the next meeting, is that correct?
It's not on the agenda. It's just a meeting. It's just to to go visit their location. It's not an agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, and a floor. See you.
Yes, hi. So, and that's clarified, it's going to be the motion provide direction to the interim city manager to start implementing the recommendations from the homelessness task force and to continue the homelessness. Okay, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Remember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, go back to item five point two, Alexa, summary of small business assistant.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is to update everyone on the ongoing activities that the city is undertaking to support small businesses in this unusual environment and with limited resources, quickly becoming more limited due to to the economic impacts that that are affecting everyone. So the city has been able to undertake some things, particularly related to business resources. We've got on our fantastic website, especially on Project W, there's a number of great things for businesses, including recovery plans. Think, download, and post windows on mass coverings. We also, as the council know, have a loan program with a million dollars dedicated to loan to Westminster businesses. And we have our temporary outdoor dining permit for restaurants, so they can continue to seat more people than they can accommodate inside, since indoor dining has again been banned, but outdoor dining is still allowed. And we're working on just trying to keep that information flow to our businesses. This item also comes with a little bit of good news that the county has allocated directly support. So there's currently a county grant program that they have in effect through Supervisor Doe's district, and businesses can apply for that grant program through the end of the month. And then it's basically done by by lottery, and then a portion of that money came directly to the city. So a little bit, I'm sorry, I'm going to look for the number real quick. Three hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars that the city can use to support businesses. It comes with a variety of rules. It is CARES Act funding, so there are federal rules on this money. And then there are additional rules that were placed on the money through our contract with the county to receive those funds. The majority of our neighboring communities are using the money for additional business grants. If you read the language that came with the advice of federal government on CARES Act, that really is kind of the direction that they pointed everyone. So staff, you know, tried to take a look at, you know, what we're doing, and they, and we have proposed moving forward with trying to potentially provide additional support to those businesses that may not already qualify for some of the things that are out there. As we've discussed with our own loan program, as well as other federal loan programs, this is, there's not really money for for startups or for new businesses or for struggling businesses. There's, you know, money for businesses that have been in business for a couple of years that have a proven track record. So this was, you know, consideration to bring forward some some money that, you know, we received in grant form to assist small businesses that may not meet those other requirements. Businesses that, you know, may have only been in business for a few months or, you know, a year. Can you imagine having only been in business for a little while, and then you face this? So we were just trying to try to reach some other businesses that may not have access to other resources. But this, this item is really for discussion to get direction from the city council, how you would like to move forward with utilizing these funds.
Mayor, I have a question.
Please, yes.
I appreciate Alexa, the work you put into researching how we could spend those dollars. And I I believe that I think we're, we've been moving in the right direction and spending those dollars. One thing that I'm very concerned about, and we, I brought this up back in April and May, we struggled a bit, and that's with testing, making sure that our residents have access to COVID testing. And overseeing the numbers continue to rise in our community. Even in Westminster, our numbers are rising, and I'm concerned about our seniors and our vulnerable population. And I'm wondering if some of that CARES Act dollars could be used to open our own testing site. I know that we've talked with the county in the past, and they've not been receptive to us moving forward and sort of just kick the can down the road. And I, I'm really concerned. Right now, the process is very confusing for a lot of residents here in our city. Sometimes have to make numerous calls and visits, and this, it's just really messy. So can we use those dollars or part of that funding to create our own testing site here in Westminster to ensure that our residents have access to testing?
So I might speak to that. And so, Councilman Contreras, yes, we can use some of that funding to do just that. The problem with fun with testing right now, it's, and this is not, it's widespread. It's getting harder and harder to be tested, and it's, that's something that the county has acknowledged. And the problem is now that the labs are overrun, and it's hard to get testing if you're asymptomatic. We can use funding, we can, we could partner with somebody. I have been reaching out to the county I have been reaching out to the county weekly. And the last, in fact, the last email was two days ago. And there again, and I think this is the third applicant that they're trying to hook us up with. So that is still ongoing, we're still pushing forward. And we could, we could look into partnering with the doctor that's at the mall.
I I I think we've, I know you've made every effort to partner with the county and we've just been going in circles. But at this point, we just, I think we need to look at a private public partnership to expedite the process because it is very confusing and it's very difficult to get testing. I don't know if anybody here has ever tried to get tested, but it is the most confusing process. And, you know, I I know people that have graduated from college that still haven't been able to figure it out. So I can't imagine those that are, you know, monolingual or having, you know, there are challenges in some in in way. We need to figure out a way, at least to get our seniors tested, at least them first, you know, give them the life preserver and have them the opportunity to be tested. But there has to be something we can do, at least a private partnership, because it's it's too much. We've been waiting and I know you've been working with the county for over two months. That's something I see happen is possible, and I I do agree in terms of the funding for our small businesses, I think they're important. I also think the lives of our residents who live here and our vulnerable population who can't get tested are also just as important.
Yeah, I'd still reach out to the, you know, to the individual at the at the mall who's in our city. And see if we can maybe get some sort of priority testing towards our seniors, I could, I can, I can do that.
Yeah, I just want to follow up the question that Sergio Contreras, as Sergio Contreras just mentioned. And you also stated that we can use part of this funding for that. But I think from here, from what I do read here, is a direct funding was allocated to Westminster for business assistant. Could we consider this as a business assistant for the testing?
So this is this, I wouldn't use this particular money that Alexa's presenting tonight for that reason. I would be, we would be using other state money that the state is giving us and other monies that the county has has given.
Okay, so it's not that much this money here, okay.
That's good to know, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, and I want to follow up with Alexa. In the stop report, your recommendation, action and motion, there are two parts to it. One is provide direction on the monies and the second one, receive and file report. I assume that the the care cat money that you want us to make decision based on your recommendation there. And then the second portion is ongoing city effort is file report, right? Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, my my suggestion here is is just a suggestion. So if there's other direction that the council wants to provide, we can certainly go back and and research it and put together a a different program or, you know, variant of this.
Okay, and for the care acts money, if you if we decided to go with this plan, when do you think that we are going to do this? And also, is there any expense if that, you know, that you have to put it aside so that we can have, you know, for any kind of advertisement? Or, you know, running the flyer or anything like that? Is there any portion that we reserve that?
So what the what the county is doing with their money is, I think, four and a half percent of the money that they're using, they're putting towards administration costs.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, at the cost of advertising a program or something like that, I I think would absolutely fall under, you know, the framework provided here for how the money can be used.
Because I know the the amount that for five thousand is about seventy nine business, give and take, you know, so, okay.
Um.
That's all.
A question, ma'am. Um, so who who hand who processing the application? We are the county.
Uh, it it will not be the county. I I believe we are going to have to find a vendor that will partner with us or, yeah, some other kind of outside manpower. Because I don't think that internally we could manage this volume.
Okay, but the application is on the county website, is that correct or?
For the county program, so there's county money that's available and that program is up and running. This money has not been allocated to anything, it's not available, so to speak, until, you know, council provides a decision on on how they want to disseminate it.
Okay, may I speak?
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes, um. You know, this is a one time money, three hundred ninety three thousand four hundred. And I'm thinking that it's great to give the grant and all that, I'm really in support of that. I know that that money is basically given one time, gone. But I'd like to see if we could reserve, if we could save about seventy five thousand dollars. One of the things that I'm very much interested in is to see if we could use that money. I don't know if it's exactly that amount or probably we'll have to kind of set it aside so we don't spend it. And do some research to see if we could look into the EIFD program. If I could speak to staff, Alexa. And that would be the enhanced infrastructure financing district revitalization of the community that, you know, county has talked about. And I know that this is something that California has been talking about. And I know Los Angeles is doing that, doing it. And I think it's really a great opportunity for Westminster. I just don't know exactly the location or what area exactly that we are gonna, you know, do this study. And see if we could use that amount of money, being that this money is is new money to us. And before we spend it, could we see what we can do to revitalize a certain area in our city? And see if we could, like, later on, it'll bring an income stream, is what I'm saying. I, you know, and rather than talking about a designated area at this time, I'd like staff to come back and see what we can do to take advantage of that, you know, EIFD program. Alexa.
I don't know.
I, yeah, I'm I'm be happy to have the attorneys look at the agreements that we have on this funding. But I'm not sure that this funding stream can be used for that. It does need to be used to support COVID related issues. So we would need to show that harm has been caused by COVID and this money is going to facilitate reparation of that. And we do have a deadline on it, it does need to be spent by the end of the calendar year.
The end of the calendar year, okay. So before we spend this, could you go and do your research and ask whoever you need to ask to see if we could spend it that way?
Sure.
And just set aside seventy five thousand dollars for that. And later on, if it if it's deemed that we can't, we can't spend it that way, we can go back and as quickly as what the next council meeting, we could release that money. And spend it towards the grant, some some more towards.
We can look into it, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
I would just, I would just be cautious that we don't sit on it for too long. The I think the goal or the purpose of the funding is to get it out as fast as we can. I know the county's been sitting on CARES Act dollars for months now and people are still waiting and hurting. And some are, you know, on the verge of losing their business. So the longer we take in talking about it, the longer people go without and close their business.
Yeah, I think it's just, I'm just asking for next meeting when we if we could come back.
Alexa, so may I, may I know, and I think the rest of the council, we really want to know, is any deadline that we have to utilize this funding? Do we have any deadline?
Yes, December thirtieth of this year.
Oh, wow, so that's coming. So we, so we, so if we extend and for the next meeting, you think that we still have time to come back?
Um, I mean, if you're, if if you intend, if the decision is to move forward with something that's, you know, not not simple, but relatively easy to get the money out the door, then yes, absolutely. You know, if it were a grant program or something like that, then then yes, we would be able to.
So everything that you recommend is in a report MRI, everything that you recommend.
I would, this is my recommendation, yes, that we would still. Still, but yes.
Can we, can we? Can we recommend that to have the staff to do that, ask the questions in lieu of, I mean, we'll make a decision, okay? If, number one, if the county allow us to set aside a seventy five thousand dollar to do whatever Kimberly Hall was asking. Then we're gonna have to do that. And if not, then it's the the staff gonna carry out the task and start the process of review, taking application and distribute the money. I think it's a, it's a, we need to get that money out to the people who need it right now. Two weeks, it's just more more time for the money gets to the right people who need help.
I think that could be easily done and could be easily asked, Alexa, so you could hop on the phone tomorrow and ask that question. And if that money is not to be done to be used that way, we'll know right away. And. And at that time, that whole entire three hundred ninety three thousand four hundred, my ever admin cost will be available for as grants.
All right, so may I have the council action or any motion from the city council, may I have that?
Well, just have clarity that the item is to review what Councilwoman or Vice Mayor Ho had mentioned in regards to the federal program. If that is not available, that we immediately move forward with distribution of these dollars through a grant program?
Yes.
Yes.
Waiting for the next council meeting and talk about it again. And then, again, people are still waiting for us to help them.
No, I think, I think, staff, if I may ask, this is what I was thinking, how long does it take for you to get this grant money, this process going? Because this shouldn't have, a question like that should not be holding up getting the this process going, correct, Alexa?
Correct, we can, we can.
Because you know, the twenty thousand dollar, what is it, loan that we were talking about? I mean, that took us a long time. There's here's the, what is it, the deadline for people to apply and and then getting the applications and that the whole process took us what, months? So I think picking up the phone tomorrow, asking and coming back to us and say, we're gonna release another seventy five thousand, shouldn't take long. And if this should happen like way before the process could even get started, would you agree? Yeah, so that's all I'm asking. Because I've been looking, I mean, I don't want to take money out of general fund to do things, but I think this is something that's available to us. And this is very recent, this this EIFD program. So I just want chance, opportunity to see if we can use some of this money rather than taking it from elsewhere. And I think this is all, it should be, but hey, you know, with the question tomorrow, you'll be able to find out.
Okay, are we gonna wait until the next council meeting to make the decision? Or we're gonna make a decision right now? If if the answer is known, then we're gonna go ahead with the recommendation by staff, right?
Yes.
I'm hearing, okay. So I like.
Okay, please, yes.
I like.
Please.
City board, would you read that?
Well, the recommendation is to provide direction, so I'm.
Okay, so I would do that. I mean, I don't know if it, do we have a motion on the floor or no?
So may I have the motion on the floor and whoever want to make a motion, please speak up.
Okay, so I'd like to motion item number five point two is that we set aside CARES Act money, three hundred ninety three thousand four hundred. To apply that towards five thousand dollar grant, which is minus the seventy five thousand dollars that we're gonna set aside for now. And basically, the criteria for those who qualify are indicated by staff already. So is there anything else? Should we set aside money for admin, minus admin or no?
I think that would be.
A four point five. Sorry for that.
Did somebody say something?
Alexa. Oh. Can it, can I just ask, the seventy five thousand that you're asking to set aside, is it clear to Alexa what that's to be set aside for? I just want to be sure.
It sounded to me like the vice mayor was seeking a feasibility study for an EIFD to determine whether or not there were areas of the city where one would be financially viable.
Okay, so that's in the record, then that would be what it's set aside for, if it's possible.
If not, the money gonna continue go to follow the staff recommendations, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
I accept the motion.
Yeah.
I don't, there's any mentioning of any admin fees that we're gonna set aside? There was mentioning of what, four percent or something like that? Alexa, did you want to mention that?
Say four point five.
Four point five, we set aside that for admin costs?
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, so I'd like to include that. So four point five percent of that money will be set aside for administrative costs.
Second emotion. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Let's remember Contreras.
Yes.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Um, just, yes, but I want to ask you that, is that include the free receive and file report for part B?
Yes.
Okay, correct.
Yeah.
So that motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item, five point three, resolution and support of census bill, right? I really want to thanks for this item, I really want to thanks our city staff and member from the community, I believe. Up to this moment, I think that our city doing very well compared to the state regarding census. In the room, city manager, would you like to have any comment on that?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I agree, our city is doing very well. And thank you, Councilman Contreras, for bringing this forward. It's very important that people, you know, do online and register for the census. This brings our city money, it does a lot of good for our city, there is no, no chance of being deported or anything like that. And I think that's, this is great that Councilman Contreras is bringing that forward and making that noted. So we will keep pushing forward on our end to encourage people to fill out their census.
Again, my purpose of bringing this item forward is to encourage, well, one, share the community's position and and our stand and then the importance of the census and ensuring that everyone in our city feels comfortable filling out that census, completing the census. And without the fear of intimidation or or free of threats that the the city, there are laws protecting them from any sort of wrongdoing. And we want to make sure that everyone responded to the census, either online or by telephone, by paper, request information, language system if the need be. And again, to be vigilant and just again, always verify if someone comes to your door. I don't think anyone should be coming to your door regarding the census, so we need to make sure you verify that, because it is illegal to impersonate a census taker. Again, wanna again, and stress the importance of taking that census, completing the census. And doing everything we can to make sure Westminster is counted. At the end of the day, we will benefit from those, from that count in many ways, in services. And especially with with our, in our community that we live in currently, with the current demographics and financial needs. With that said, I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
My second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second to support this resolution.
Yes, that was a motion made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho. And that's to adopt a resolution entitled, the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster affirming its commitment to the twenty twenty U.S. Census and the twenty twenty Census Bill of Rights and Responsibilities. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Let's remember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next item, six point one, resolution reforming proclamation for twenty twenty one and resolution number four nine eight three. Which declared assistant of a local authority may have.
Move to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval. For approval, yeah.
Yes, and that was a motion to to adopt. Yes, and that was a motion to, to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Deo.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, I don't know why it's, sorry about that.
Okay, that motion carried five to zero.
Item six point two, ordinance related to the use of the city seal and logo. May have a motion. I think we all read the staff report.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Yes.
By annual thing, right? Didn't we do it last year?
No, we talked about it, but we tabled it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to expand on that, I know we, we were moving forward, we tabled it and then it came back, cleaned up some language.
Yeah, absolutely.
I remember, I remember we talked about last, last year or two years ago.
Uh, I think, yeah, I think that we table it, yeah, I remember.
We, we did, this back before you now.
Yeah, no, we um, we, we brought this, or I brought this to the council last year. We talked about it on September eleventh and basically this was ordinance, um, just language and our use of the city seal and also adding the component of use of the logo. Um, so there was some discussion to clean up the language and we're bringing it back today.
All right, so I second a motion made by Councilmember Nguyen, right? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's gonna be to introduce an ordinance for first reading entitled an ordinance to the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster. Capture one point zero to title one of the municipal code related to the city seal, read by title only and waive further reading. Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Deo.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, next item six point three, placement of a measure on November third, twenty twenty, general municipal election ballot related to term limit for elected official.
Move to approve. No, I have, I have question on this one. Um, my understanding is that the council have decided and voted for three consecutive of the four-year term for each office uh, back in September of last year. Um, I know there's a lot going on at the, at the time and there was some confusion about it. And um, for me, I still think that, oh, there should have the opportunity to serve the community in different office. And, you know, and when I look at the staff report and also resolution today is say that um, uh, shall the ordinance be adopted that prospectively limit the number of term to a person that may serve as member of city council or mayor in any combination to three year, uh, three, four year terms? I'd like to make a motion, uh, as, um, what do we call substitute motion? To take out in any combination.
Uh, city attorney, you like, uh, would you like to comment on that?
Christian, Christian wrote this, so he'll help you.
So um, I went back and looked at the September eleventh of two thousand nineteen meeting and listened to it again. And the conclusion of that, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of options thrown out at the time, substitute motions. Um, in the end, what was decided by the council and the council can discuss it tonight and, and modify it if you like. And what we could do would be to come back at the next meeting and put it on. So we could do that quickly if you wanted to do that. But what was agreed at the time and what this reflects would be that council member, a person could, a one individual could serve on the council either as a council member or mayor for a total of three terms, three, four-year terms. That's the way it's written. So whether you're mayor, whether you're council member, it's a grand total of twelve years and then you can't come back. That was, that was a lot of discussion about that, whether you would have a break and then come back. But ultimately what was concluded was twelve years and then you're done. Um, and it would apply both to the office of mayor and council member together. That can be changed. It, um, some cities might apply that, say, twelve years to the council member and twelve years to the office of mayor. That could be done. But right now, that's, that was what was direction provided and that's why it's written the way it is right now. But we're, we can bring it back at the next meeting if you would like to change it.
So I'd like to make a motion that we're going to bring it back as Councilmember Nguyen request that he would like to strike like the one in any combination, right? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Well, I think, I, I think if we do that, it may be, make it a little bit unclear. So I think what would be best would be just to make a motion to say that you would like for the term limits to apply and how you want it to apply. And I'll, I'll draft it that way and bring it back.
All right. So. I, Councilmember.
Okay, my motion, my motion is to, my motion is to have the three consecutive of four-year term for each office, which is whether it's a council members or the mayor. Uh, because I think, I still think that others should have the opportunity to serve the community in twenty-four years. Office, where, whether, whether if, uh, you know, the, the communities do entrust in them and have them hold different, uh, different responsibility. For twenty-four years? I don't, I don't, I don't, I expect anybody with the twenty-four years sitting in there. But at the same time, I don't want to limit the ability of one person. Let's say that they, they have two years in, in, in the council and they have one, I mean, two terms in council and then one term in, in the mayor position. And then that, that's it for them. When the people of city of Westminster, residents still interest them, when they do a good job for that. So, you know, I want, I want that to continue.
Well, you know what, I, you know, chances you get, you know, any, any of one that get elected for how many years? Twenty-eight years? It's a pretty slim, but you know, what's the point of having a term limit where you can, you keep serving for twenty-eight years? I mean, you know, um, we already agreed, this is what we want, twelve years in office. And let's, let's come in and, and have a chance to serve. And that was our original agreement, that it was the majority of the city council, uh, voted for that. Uh, now it's, it's a time to put on the ballot and, you know, and change the heart, you know. I, I don't think, you know, if it's that the case, then why do we have a term limit to say?
Well, the term limit is.
Follow step and wait for the next guy. The, the next majority of council will put something else on, you know, with twenty-eight years on in office, might as well, we don't have any term limit.
Well, this is the time that we have to make a decision whether it's, is, is good or bad. That this is the very important time that we have to make decisions for the community. And I think that, you know, the people can serve.
I, I think it's more for you than anything else.
Oh, no. Don't even label that, all right? We are discussing, we are discussing in the city council so that we can make decision, okay? Whether.
I think we already made a decision.
We already made it.
Well, oh, council.
Mayor, I'm in.
Only one, only one person speak, please. Vice Mayor Ho.
Okay, well, you know, actually I was just getting ready to, to vote on it and, 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 you know, basically I, I was going to, to support that item the way it is. But uh, having heard what uh, councilmember uh, Nguyen was saying, I, 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 you know, I think he's, there's some merit to that. And let me explain what I'm thinking is prior to us going to, you know, split up into four different districts. Uh, remember, the mayor is also citywide and council member position is also citywide. That is not going to be the case beginning of November or next term, next year, two, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. So let's just say if you were elected to be a council member of like your district. So what he's saying is that if you have twelve years in your district and then let's say if you, and you've only used up eight years and then the last term you decided, hey, I'm gonna run for mayor. And then you became the mayor, now this is citywide, then you only really only have one term to be mayor. So I do see a valid point there. If that person, that council member uh, serves and has done a good job, obviously, then the city uh, then the constituents would want to vote for him, let's just say he's gonna become the mayor. Then I think it would be fair for him to have twelve years as a mayor. If he, of course, every four years he goes, you know, and go for the reelection. And that is if he could make it uh, and get reelected, then uh, he stays on for another twelve years potentially. So I just do see, I do see his point. So I say, I, I mean, I, I understand that and I think I, I like that idea. That is if and only, of course, that person, yeah, real, it's gonna be, um, yeah, of course, it, it only happens if you have done a good job. You serve well and people want you to stay, you know, will you get that many chances? So do you, you see what I'm saying? So beginning of twenty twenty, we are going to be split into four districts. So I do see a valid point there.
I want to thank Vice Mayor Ho for clarifying that. But at the same time, I want to, uh, you know, to make it known to everybody, uh, especially that, uh, uh, councilmember Deo, you know, labeled me for, for that. Uh, it's not for him, that's not for he, but this is for everybody. And I bring it up so that we can discuss and come to conclusion and vote for that before we put it on the ballot. It's not for me, so I, I just want to clarify that.
Well, you, that, if that takes, might as well, you know, abolish this term limit. And you know, you have the majority city council to support that, so might as well, you know, take it off. Because it doesn't make any sense to have term limit where, uh, you know, you can run, uh, after you're done with this, you can run for another office. That's, that's not the, that's not the purpose of term limit. Term limits is allow new blood, new ideas to come into city hall and serve city. Okay, so if you have twelve years in office, um, leave so that other people can come in with fresh idea and move the city forward. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the term limits is all about. I mean, you know, that's why we have.
I, I don't disagree with the term, term limit, I don't disagree with the term limit.
Councilmember Nguyen, uh, we left on a councilmember Deo, finish, yes, continue.
Okay, so you know, if that's the case, then why bother? Why put it on the ballot? You know, just abolish its term limit because you don't support term limit. And then, you know, why, why have to go and all kind of debate, try to justify your action where it's very obvious you want term limit? And that's why you try, you know, now, uh, uh, decided to change direction, right? Make screen, that's not right. Why bother? You know, might as well, um, just make a motion and.
So, Councilmember Deo, are you done?
Done, I'm done.
Okay, so now, Councilmember Nguyen, please speak. Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Contreras, I'm still waiting for my turn.
Okay, so, Councilmember Contreras.
I, I just want to go back that we had this conversation, feel like we're rehashing it all over again. We already talked about it, we made a decision a while back. I don't think anything should be different. I mean, the number, the clock starts all over again, so, I mean, you know, Councilman Nguyen wants to be on the office till twenty-eight years. That's basically what he's looking for, because I'm, I'm not, the only person who brought it up was him. So I don't think it's really about us, it's really about, you know, um, someone's specific decision. The council already made a decision that we're gonna, that we're looking at term limits. This is the best thing, we came up, there was a great compromise, we're looking at eight, we decided on twelve, we thought it was fair. I mean, who wants to be here for twenty-four years? I don't, I don't think, I don't think anybody wants to be here for twenty-four year, what I'm talking about. But I. I'm sorry, Councilmember Nguyen, I'm not done yet. I'm still, I'm speaking my turn. Go ahead, go ahead. And then I just want to again, just state that the intention was for us to put term limits on the ballot for us to the, for the people to decide. And we're, I, I believe we're doing that, we're, we're in the right direction. Um, some of us have been in office for, you know, eight years and some of us been in office longer and some of them longer for four. Either way, you still get twelve years from after this measure passes, in addition to what you've already served. But now it's being changed to make it so that you can change it for also mayor, that also gives you another twelve years. So now you're looking at, let's just say, you know, twelve years on the council, twelve years mayor, you know, four years already served. I mean, that's twenty-four years. I mean, you really want to be here for twenty-four years, for twenty-eight years? That's too much, too much. That's, so can we please just move forward, we'll be decided on and, and move on?
All right, Councilmember Contreras, are you done? Councilmember Contreras? All right, so Councilmember Nguyen, please, you have.
Yes, I, I will still stand with the recommendation that I have. And I think that, uh, I have explained enough that this is, you know, before we put it on ballots for people to vote. I want to make sure that we carefully, uh, look at the, the, the recommendation that we have, uh, put out there. And then I think that for me, I'd explain it and, or with the vice mayor Ho, uh, you know, uh, explained clearly, uh, you know, what we need, uh, are facing with. I think is, uh, you know, I will stand with my decision and, and I have, have motion for that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any second? Okay, I second it. City clerk?
So my understanding is for, the motion is for staff to come back with an amended ordinance that makes it twelve years for city council member and then separate twelve years for mayor, is that correct?
That's correct, for different office. I don't think anybody to go for that, but you know, I, I think you are, it's important to you, obviously.
That's all right, that's all right.
Important to you, so.
All right.
You know, may God bless you with all those years.
I'd like to call for a question, please, you know, councilmember, please, only one person speak.
Okay, you know what? You know, if that the case, might as well add just no, to save the city money. And just like no term limit. I mean, you can stay here as long as you want. There's no term limit, so that would save the city money. It's cost money to put on the, on the, this ordinance on the ballot, is that correct, uh, city attorney?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, what money we're talking about?
Do you want to make a motion? Sorry.
Hold on, Vice Mayor Ho. I think we have, there's an item on the floor.
May I speak, may I speak really quickly? Okay, I'm saying that number one is, let's, we are not gonna miss the deadline on the ballot. The thing is, the only thing that councilmember, I, councilmember Nguyen is asking is for us to take a look and see and do a little more due diligence and it's kind of refreshing my, our memory from last year's conversation. So we are not going to miss this deadline where we're gonna put this on the ballot. So I think let's, let's just give him that respect and just look into it, bring it back next time and then we'll move forward, put it on the ballot, whatever it is that we decide on, so let's not bash him, you know.
All right.
This is, I'm waiting for the city attorney to answer the question, how much this cost to put it down the ballot?
Have to ask city, the city clerk, no, I, I don't know.
I, I do.
I believe, I believe this eighty-five hundred, I think is what was on the staff report.
Well, you know, it, it's might as well with no term limit. I mean, once done office, then go to the next one. If you want to be a career, uh, politician, because that's what you all you have to survive and we don't want that. We want somebody that use your talent, come in, serve the community and after twelve year, that's enough, get out. Let's get someone else a chance to come in with fresh idea and serve the community. You know, you, you modify the, what we agreed last year and change it to the, to twelve years for each office, might as well uh, take it off, take off the, the ballot. I mean, you know, to both, make a, make a substitute motion to.
You, 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 you want to make a substitute?
Pretending, oh yeah, I support term limit, but then, uh, now, okay, you know, that's twelve year for each office, so like, no term limits there. You know, when you're done with this, this is all you have, you want to hang on to this to survive, to get elected and continue to move on. It's, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, if, if that's the case, you want to make a substitution motion. Well, if, if that's the case, you want to make a substitution motion to uh not to have a term limit, is that what you're saying? You are welcome to make an improvement.
I'm I'm, what I'm saying is, you you need to stop making, pretending that you support term limit.
Not pretending anything.
All right, council.
I as well, I'll have no term limit, because that's save the city eighty five hundred dollars. It's just a wasting time and effort of everybody.
All right, so now we have the motion and a second on the floor. City clerk?
You're, you're muted.
Okay, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
This is the only way we're gonna get term limits or anything close to it, at some age, yes.
Okay, council member Doe?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, and council member Nguyen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried four zero one with council member Doe abstaining and staff will come back next meeting with. Uh a revised ordinance for consideration.
All right, uh next item, commission and committee item seven point one. Youth committee appointment. So I I think that uh, I really wanna thanks our city staff. Uh for continue to maintain this uh committee. I think that council member Contreras, you know. I hope you still remember that uh before member the council, we had to interview. Student, but after that staff, uh they uh they willing to spend their time, so. During this, I may ask our, our city staff, so basically the interview going to be over Zoom, right? Am I correct? Any staff would like to respond that?
Uh I believe, I believe the intent was over Zoom, but I'm not sure.
Guys, I assumed that the meeting, the interview was. I would, I would assume it's gonna be Zoom.
Yes.
Okay, so I like to approve, yes.
Yeah, I second that. And why again, thanks city staff for going through the arduous process of interviewing these fine candidates. I know it takes a lot of time. We have a lot of applications that come in every year and it's really. Good to see the effort behind it and making sure we select the best candidates for our committee, so. Um again, second that item.
So we have a motion and second.
Yes, so as recommended, it's a point six current youth committee members um to serve as regular members for a term that expired June thirty twenty twenty one. And that's for, and that's to a point in our dean Gabrielle, Terry Pham, Vincent Ton. Jessica Nguyen, Diane Din and Courtney Ngo. And then to direct staff to participate in an interview process of the fourteen applications to a point five regular members and two alternate members. So Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And council member Wen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Uh next, common and request for agenda item from city council agency members. New A B one, two, three, four, report when required. So Vice Mayor Ho.
Thank you uh so much. I would like to first of all, thank the homeless task force. Um am I off we, okay. For giving us such a group presentation for your dedication, so your services over the last months. And um. Some of the recommendations you made really make sense and uh I thank you for that and uh I'd like um. To recommend that uh. He stood on uh as many people as possible to continue to do a great job. I really appreciate all the effort and staff as well. Um I know it's not really easy to get a big group of people together like that. Um a lot of hounding, a lot of back and forth, but uh eventually it was done. It was a great, you know, job, well done. So I just wanna make sure I. Um publicly acknowledge that. So secondly. Is um I know some, some of our, where some of the restaurant owners have uh. I guess since last week when the governor changed or starting to close the, the, you know, restaurants again. Uh dining room. Uh I'm beginning to get some questions about uh the T U P. So I'd like to ask staff at this time, how is that process going and have you gotten very many requests? Uh or many applications for T U P?
We have not gotten a lot. Um it it did pick uh last week. I think there are three in the queue right now. And I think we have only issued one so far, so it's, um there hasn't been a lot.
Well, I would say that this, like I said, since last week uh with the change of uh. Direction or the 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 new order to close uh in, in dining in. Uh is that the case? Is that still the case? They're, all restaurants are closed, uh their dining rooms are closed. Indoor dining. You're gonna expect more T U Ps, so I'm hoping that uh we could speed up the process for people. And help them out, because I know a lot of people are very, very on edge uh these days. So I really uh would appreciate that and uh I'm gonna continue to refer people over to you guys to help. And uh and then. I also um received phone calls regarding the results of your lottery. I don't know whether posted and if you could like give me an update on how you notify these folks. Whether they or not they made the lottery list, you're a finalist. And and could you also go through that process? How that was done? Who picked the names? They're done electronically or? Do that or anything uh help you or anything like that? Could you explain that process?
Could you clarify if you're asking about the rental assistance program or the business loan program?
Both, I would say. Uh I don't know if the business loan, you've done that yet. I know you just closed that this past Monday. But the rental assistance you closed a while ago. And I went through a lottery and um so I think for. Um transparency sake and also as I know we've talked about it before, but. As a reminder, could you go through that process once again, how you went about choosing these folks and? The winners, the lucky winners and and where did you post them so we could all direct, redirect them? To find their names or or, you know, to uh find out if they made it or not.
Right, so the lottery was conducted um here on uh. In the community services building, we had four staff members in attendance and there were two members of local clergy that drew the numbers. So each application was put in an envelope, assigned a number. All the numbers were put into one of those spinning things. So our, our clergy members verified that all the numbers were there before putting them into the spinner. And um drew them in order and that's how the applications were prioritized. We did not review the applications prior to that point for um eligibility. We reviewed them to make sure that they had submitted all the correct documentation, but not to verify eligibility. So that process started after the lottery. Going through each individual application and making sure that they met um the basic criteria of. Um having been impacted by COVID, um being a Westminster resident, being a renter, having a rental agreement, those things. So once that vetting process was completed, um and that was completed, I like last Wednesday, so last Thursday. We emailed and mailed through the postal service notification to those that um. Were those lottery winners that that were eligible. So they received a series of documents from us and that included um the agreement that they need to sign. For for the funds, these are C D B G funds, so there are a lot of strings that are attached to them. So they need to return that documentation. Then additionally, their landlords also need to um sign a statement that they agree to accept the funds. On behalf of their tenant and provide us with their W nine. So we've received um back about thirty so far of, I think, a hundred and thirteen. Uh residents have been selected to receive assistance. We did not post those names anywhere. Um are, in in my mind, I I think that's maybe a a privacy thing. I don't know that legally it is. I mean legally, every, everything is public, but um so we are handling it internally with notification via email. And mail.
So if somebody were to call in and and ask whether or not they, for some reason. Maybe they didn't receive a a letter from you or an email from you, if they don't have an email. What phone number could they call in to check on the status?
Sure, so they would call seven one four five four eight. Three one seven zero. And that's Michael's line, our housing specialist.
Okay, and they've request, they could request for Vietnamese speaking uh.
Absolutely, yeah.
Operator, okay. And what about the, the uh the other program, which is the um. Uh what is it? The one point one million?
The business loan program, yes, the um.
I have a question. So if you didn't get a hundred and thirteen uh people to come back with all the paperwork and you've got money left over. What are you gonna do? Are you gonna choose more names from the lottery or?
The the lottery, all all three hundred and one applications, I think, have received a prioritization. We didn't stop at a number. And so we would go to the next person on, on the list in in the reorder.
So go ahead and answer me regarding the. Business one.
The business loan application program closed window um at five P M this past Monday. They received ninety seven applications. So um if all applicants are requesting the full twenty thousand dollars, that means about half of them will be um. funded. So the S B D C right now is going through the applications and making sure, again, kind of that that first run of eligibility. Um have you been in business two years? Have you, can you show that you've been impacted by COVID? So they're in that process right now. Um it's our hope that from the close of of the, of the. Of window on Monday, that'll be about thirty days before we can get funding out. But some of that really depends on the applicants themselves, because the S B D C, once they do that first pass. Um they, you know, we need to kind of move towards gathering those additional pieces of information, like the tax returns. Um running credit reports, all of those pieces. So um hopefully everyone that applied for the loan is gonna be very um cooperative and and anxious. To to return those documents quickly, but there is some wiggle room that may need to be accommodated.
Okay, all right, so thank you so much. What I wanna put on the agenda is. If I could ask, I mean, I would like to see if um we could identify. Some areas that we could, assuming that we're gonna get that uh money, uh the seventy five thousand uh that we spoke about earlier. Towards the E I D O, I mean, I'm sorry, E I D O, but is uh the um.
The E I F.
Uh the I. There's so many. Great. Yes, so that's what I wanna put on the agenda. If staff could help identify certain area districts that we could use that money. So that way, that way we could like next, the next agenda or uh the next meeting, we could come back. And uh be able to, if there is money. That we could use from that fund, uh the three hundred ninety four thousand uh. And if uh that was approved to be used that way, we'd like to identify, I'd like staff to identify certain areas. By the meeting, is that?
What's the criteria that you're looking for? I don't think you're clear.
Uh it's like a business zone. It is to, you know, um I mean, if they look into that program, that is, uh there are some criteria that they could go by. And I'd like staff to look into that and just identify certain zones, certain districts. And then we could talk about it um at the next meeting and vote on it, what district we wanna apply that money to, towards.
That's not, I'm afraid, not a simple analysis and um what I was understanding, your direction for the seventy five thousand dollars would be a feasibility study. To determine the areas that that this would be viable. So um E I F Ds are are very similar. Their tax increment financing. So you need to be evaluating the types of property improvements that would be happening in a certain place. Um they only really work if you have a taxing agency that partners with you. Um school districts are not eligible, but it would be. Um discussions with the county and any other taxing agencies, Midway City, that type of thing, where they are also contributing. Their tax revenue growth from a certain area. So it's um, it is quite an analysis to to determine where an E I F D would be feasible.
But first of all, I think that we just need to know. An area in within, identify the area within city of Westminster that we could do that. And then, of course, I don't think staff is gonna do the analysis. That's something that could be done by outside agency, correct? And we just. And then research that and bring back.
Isn't there a cost to it though?
There's no cost at this time with the, with what our staff's doing. And then uh that's, that's what they need to do is find out the costs and it, whether or not we're able to use that money for that cost. Okay?
Okay, so just so I'm, I'm clear, we're gonna find out about the seventy five thousand dollars out of the CARES Act funding. I've got that. And then additionally, you want staff to come back next.
Just certain area, like enterprise zone, possibly could be enterprise zone that we could use the money for. And that's it. That's, that's all I ask. You're not gonna do any study or anything like that.
All right, so I honor that request. City clerk?
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
That's my request?
Yes.
That's my Doe?
Yes.
That's my win?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Vice Mayor Ho, are you done? Or you want to continue?
Um. Well, and I I just wanna address um everyone who's text me, emailed me, contacted me. The last week or so, I appreciate all your correspondences and I uh would just wanna simply say thank you. And um, you know, I think we just need to. Um I don't wanna speak on any particular subject. I just wanna simply, thank you for reaching out. To us on the council and to me in particular. And I appreciate all your effort and appreciate all your comments and um. And that's, thank you very much.
So uh council member Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I wanna, again, I think they're already gone for the day, but the work that was put together on the homeless task force, I hope that. Um we, the next step would be to, well, I like to see, maybe it's an item on the agenda, or I don't know if it's a consensus on the council. That we take that report and we take action. And so maybe looking at what steps we can take. To start moving forward on some of the recommendations. Uh when I recall, when we created this committee as a council, our goal is to, you know, to help identify a location to move forward. Because that's something that was important to us. And I know there's conversations right now about looking with other cities, like uh Garden Grove and such. So I don't know, I don't want, what I don't want is this to sit on the shelf and or sit in a, in a drawer somewhere on or on a desktop. I want us to take action, so. I don't know, I guess this question is a city manager. How do we move forward with that report and do take some actionable steps? To address building of a homeless shelter?
Well, we've started the process of this is actually going to visit a homeless shelter. Um and like I said, we've invited and we will invite council and you're welcome to join us. Um and. Um along with that uh invitation, there is going to be the developer of that particular um homeless shelter. Visiting with us, so we can ask questions at the ti- at that time. We're also inviting garden, or Garden Grove is inviting us, we're going with us, so. There's an opportunity there to at least get the ball rolling. In the meantime, Alexa's also looking at, working, gonna start working with brokers to find locations. Some feasible locations within our city and also within the city of Garden Grove. Um. I believe that we're probably going to to be the ones that are gonna have to do the legwork on this and hope that Garden Grove will uh. Join in with us once we presented them with something. But uh it is definitely on our radar radar and something that we do wanna get going with and um is that meeting? Will be within the next week or two. And I will be reaching out to you or you can reach out to me if you've got a couple of dates in mind and. We're gonna gather all that information and try and get this done in the next couple of weeks, at least get that piece of it.
Yeah, we've been talking about, so we are taking steps based on the recommendation received, so. Yeah, I definitely wanna be part of that process and look forward to learning more. Um I wanna go back to testing, COVID testing. Um I like to place on the agenda that we move forward with a private, public, private partnership to provide testing. Uh for asymptomatic, asymptomatic residents, specifically uh our seniors. Uh if if we start with them first, I would prefer we start with them. If, if we start with them first, I would prefer we start with them, it's important that we do everything we can. To protect our community, numbers continue to climb. Today, we had a thousand three hundred and twenty-two new cases in the county. And we broke the ceiling of twenty thousand. This is not going away anytime soon. We need testing, we need contract tracing, and we need to do our part to invest in our, in the safety of our community. So I like to place that on the agenda for, again, a public, private partnership for COVID testing, beginning with our most vulnerable seniors. And using our CARES Act funding, and if possible, if need be, some of our general fund dollars, because this is. This to me is a matter of life or death, this is not a game, this is not. Something we're gonna wait for it to go away on its own, it's not going away anytime soon. But we need to take swift action, we've already waited on the county for almost three months. On their direction, not to move forward, because we didn't wanna confuse anyone or provide any more. We wanna coordinate with them, but that's not working, I mean, we're waiting, people are dying, and people are getting infected, and our cases in Westminster keep climbing. And I think the waiting is done, we need to move forward, and I think an item on the agenda is what I'm looking for, again, to look for a public, private partnership. To use our CARES Act funding. Whether it be CARES Act funding or possible, you know, general fund dollars, or I know we're also, we could, we could possibly be reimbursed by FEMA. I mean, it's time to act, so that's, that's the item I have.
Yeah, I honor that request, but I want our interim city manager to comment on that. Regarding the requirement from C D C.
Yeah, I, we could definitely use CARES Act money to do that, and, and I will reach out to, we do have the. The doctor at the mall, and he's willing to work with us, I don't know that, at what cost. Certainly, we can have, I don't know if we could reach out to others and get quotes, I know, for whatever reason, the state's having problems. Getting someone to work with us, and I don't, I don't know what the story is on that, I'll reach out to them as well to see. If they, you know, they could give me some, some people to reach out to, but I can certainly do that and find out the costs and bring that back.
Okay, can I have my item on the, my item on the floor, can I get a second?
Yes, I, I already, I honor that request, that mean I second that, so we have a, we have a motion and. Second to honor council member contraract request. City clerk?
Now, that's a motion, that's a request from Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Mayor Ta. To move forward with a private, public partnership for COVID testing, particularly starting with the seniors. Testing for symptomatic and asymptomatic, using CARES Act and possibly general fund monies. Council or Mayor Ta.
Yes, let me, let me be clear, this would be to put it on the next agenda, because we can't take action on an item without, it's not a new agenda.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Dough.
Yes.
Motion to win.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Councilmember can try us, are you done?
No, no, sir, I have one more question actually for the city manager, I haven't had a chance to talk to her, my question is on. Public protective equipment. Do we have sufficient? Equipment for our city staff? And I know that I went to visit the community services building the other day, and we had Plexiglas. And I know City Hall has done a good job of protecting our, our, our staff. Are there any needs that you've identified since some of the procedures you implemented? And reopening City Hall and some of our facilities? Where you believe we need an increased support?
So we evaluate all this stuff daily, I know that there's, we're in the process of getting some additional things, I know we're looking forward to the day that we are able to open our senior center, and I know community services director, she's Diana Dobert, she's been working on getting ways of testing people for. Temperatures and with the hands off type thing, so we're still, you know, moving forward with finding better ways of dealing with. The community, we're also just working on getting a queuing. Application to where people can come to City Hall and they can, you know, online, they can make appointments, so. Definitely something we're continuing to look at, as far as P P E. We do have our emergency. Department that, that keeps us. Keeps that going, and I believe that we are, we do have a sufficient P P E, I have not heard that, you know, that's been an issue for us. But as far as, you know, helping the public and making things safer, that's an ongoing thing that we're continuing to monitor and address and. Daily, we're, we're doing this, and I think we've been doing a very good job, and yes, if you come to City Hall, you will see the Plexiglas, and I think that's, our employees are. Are very glad to have that. Added bit of protection, in addition, we're still wearing masks here, and we do require the public to wear masks, so. To answer your question, I, I, yes, I think we're sufficient as we stand now, but it's, it's an ongoing. Task that we continue to look at and, and research.
All right, and my last sort of question, and I don't think this is an item, but maybe it's something that we can work on. I've had a couple of calls in regards to disposal of face coverings. People complaining about them just being disregarded on sidewalks and parts. And I know it would be almost nearly impossible to put up bins all across the city, but. Is there maybe a, a location we can identify in the city, or a couple of locations, maybe at the city yard and at City Hall? And, and, and on the east side, that's further out into towards. Because I know we don't have any large facilities in that area. Where people can dispose of their face coverings or anything that they believe may be contagious or. Health hazard to our community.
We can certainly look into that.
But I don't, does that need to be an item, is that something that should be handled?
I, I don't feel like it needs to be an item, but that's up to you, I mean, I have no problem looking into that.
Please, I don't wanna create any more items, just because, so if you could look into that and maybe identify again three bins, I mean, three locations. You know, east, you know, mid and west, where people can dispose of their face coverings or any items that they feel. Maybe, well, this is focus on face coverings for now, because I don't want them to start dumping off mattresses and such, but. Just specific to face coverings, because they, they seem to be popping up, they're like the new litter in terms of cigarette butts, now it seems more like face covering. And that, well, that's, Mayor, I'm complete, sir.
All right. Thank you so much for that, and Councilmember Dough.
Oh, thank you. First of all, I just wanna thanks the homelessness task force for outstanding report and recommendations. I understand that you all have been making a contribution to serve, to help. The city. Dealing with the homeless task force, with homeless homelessness problem. And this is, issues been going on for years and years and years. I hope that the. Interim city manager, Sherry Johnson, can pick up the. Recommendation and started to have a clear and concise. Way to implement this, we have to take care of this, we have to do this, it's been passing around for too long. I've been two year and. And. The, the city manager and the mayor has been talking through, attending a lot of meetings. For a longest time, but there's no, there's no action, so I hope that.
City clerk, I think that there is a technical issue.
It might actually just be on his end. Uh, he was, looks like he got disconnected. Or no. For whatever reason.
So he's still on? Okay, there, there we go, I think he come back.
Of some reason, it got cut off, so. So I hope the interim city manager, Sherry Johnson, can. Take recommendations from the homeless task force and started to. Have a clear and concise direction how to, taking care of this ongoing problem, so. It's just a matter of when we have to do this, not if. So thank you very much, thank you all for participating in this, and I thank the council for. Appointing a member of the community to come up with such a comprehensive study, I really appreciate that. You know, I, I, I have been contacted with a lot of businesses, especially restaurants in this city. Regarding the outdoor permit. I haven't seen the application, but I were told it's very complicated. And it takes a lot of time and effort to apply. Can we? Sherry, can you give a directive to the planning commission to simplify the process? I mean, you know, the, the governor shut the indoor. Eatery for three weeks, and it's almost a week gone by, and since a lot of people struggling try to apply. Or they haven't been applying, because they, they, they looked at the application and. They would, I haven't seen it yet, but they, they were telling me that's a very complicated process. It's gonna take a long time, that the city require a lot of information. Cities are temporary, can we simplify the process? You know, as long, I'm, as long as there's no lie and property in jeopardy, there's no public safety. Public safety is an issue, can we simplify it and allow people to, you know, set up. Outdoor area for the customer to, to dine, I mean, you know. People need to eat, so sometime they came to order and take it home, and they have to. Consume right there at the location, is anyway, is that possible? Is that, that's something we need a council action, that's something we can.
Yeah, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm gonna defer to Alexa on that, you know, this is her area of expertise.
The, the process does involve collection of some data for safety purposes. We have streamlined it pretty well, I'm happy to take another look at it and see what else we can try to trim down. But yes, we, we do need the applicants to sort of explain to us. How, you know, if they're expanding into particularly a parking area, which is a lot of our restaurants, you know, kind of a front, a parking lot. How they're going to maintain the safety of, of those customers and making sure that barriers are put in place. That the table spacing is, is correct, so yeah, I mean, we, we do need to collect that information. But we've, we've done quite a bit to try to make it as simple as possible, providing sample layouts for people to use. We've worked with OCFA closely to make sure that, you know, the, the pieces that we can do quickly, so that's forty-nine people or under, that they don't need to review that normally. This would be something they, they would also have to go to review, so we, we were very conscious trying to make it as simple as possible, but I'm happy to. Look at it again, especially now that we've had a couple go through the process and try to get some, some feedback on, on what we can adjust.
Oh, thank, yeah, thank you very much. What I was told that many landlord was waiting. Okay, hesitant to allow the restaurant to do that based on safety concern and that stuff, so. If the, if the city give a directive. Simplify the process and, and that will help the business owners, restaurants owner to continue to operate and. Making the ends meet, I greatly appreciate that, so could you, you know, inform me as to what step do you simplify? So that I can inform the constituents.
Sure, I'd be happy to get you something.
And another, another question, do you, do we charge the? The businesses a fee for, to process the application temporarily?
We do, and I don't have it off the top of my head, I would need to get that to you tomorrow.
Five dollars.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I thought it was a hundred and forty-five dollars for application.
Okay.
I write the application, and I, I think it's pretty simple, but if there's any way. Alexa, we could simplify, and I, I'm in agreement with Councilman Dough. It is, I, I mean, I looked at that process, at that application, I see, it's pretty. It's as simple as you can probably get it to be, but if there's anything else we could do to simplify, I think by all means, we need to help. So I'm in, in agreement with that, and I know it's, the cost, as I remember, is a hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay, and, and if we can, you know, we can have it's temporary, that temporary permit in effect. In conjunction with the directive of the state, as soon as they, the, the state give out the directive, but they know, know indoor. Service, then that permit continue to apply, automatically apply to those restaurants.
Yeah, the, the idea behind the permit was, was before the state did the, the new shutdown, we were. Just encouraging people to use social distancing, so this was a way to expand. The number of tables that they could have, if they're using, you know, social distancing within the restaurant, which we hope everyone is, so. Yeah, it, it won't, it won't be impacted by decisions made by the state to reopen indoor dining. We will still continue to work with the outdoor dining permit until such time that, you know, hopefully this.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I need, and I appreciate your understanding, thank you. You know, I. We, well, we are in the process of hiring a new city manager. And I receive a lot of phone calls and from the resident who are concerned about this issue. And, you know, I would like to have. The consultant, Bob Paul, and. The. City manager candidate to be present on the next meeting when we discuss about his appointment.
It's, it's, well, let, let me indicate that we'll bring it back to the council when we finish the background check. And we have to evaluate that background check and make sure he's passed the background check before we bring it back to the council. Once that's completed, then we'll, we'll certainly have him back and do that, but it may take a few weeks.
Oh, okay, so it's a few weeks, like two weeks or four weeks?
The chief told me he thought about three to four weeks. It's a complete DOJ background check, so it'll, it'll, it requires some contact with the former employers. So I would suspect three to four weeks, that after that, we will bring back a report to the council.
Thank you very much, appreciate that information, sir, that's all I have, well, again, thank you, thank you staff, thank you Sherry for. Continue showing your leadership and taking care of the city in this kind of pandemic, so I greatly appreciate it, thank you all. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Win. Councilmember Win. Are you still in the system?
Yes, I am here, I'm sorry, I was mute. Alexa, I just want to follow up with you on the, the fees for the, the application process for outside dining. I. Vice Mayor Ho mentioned is hundred and forty-five, but somehow it's registered in my, my hundred and sixty-five, can I get a clear number from you?
I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, I will need to look it up, and I'd be happy to send it to the group tomorrow.
Okay, all right, and also, I would like to thank you, you and your teams for the effort of streamline the process, I've been, you know, I, I know, you've been working hard. And I can't thank you enough for the effort that you guys putting in and, and working on the, on the process. And I'm sure that the city council, they are support you on that, and, and, you know, if you need any support from us. You know, we are open for your recommendation, all right, so you know that you have support from us. The next thing is I want to, to get away with the council members, I'd like to thank the homeless task force team. I know that they put in a lot of effort, you know, again, we all want to thank you for the effort that you put in. The next one is I want to ask, share you a public works. I know that we had a meeting, you, you and Mayor, myself. Had the meeting with Midway City Sanitary District, Channel Manager Ken Robbins. And we talked about different, you know, different plans. One of the plan is to see if, and I believe that. Ken Robbins agreed to look into possible to help us with some of the bookie items. And the job that we have to do is we have to identify some of the hot spot, so that they, they can. Schedule with the C R N R and, and, and moving, you know, help us moving on that. Have we do any study on that yet, or do we have a list of where we supposed to? You know, to give it to him?
Yes, I, I did reach out to our code enforcement, our C P U guys, and I will get back to you on that, I'll, I'll check on them, I know, obviously, COVID has. Obviously, COVID has delayed some things, but now that. Midway is back in in business and picking up things, I will follow up on that.
With that, I don't think that we need to put it on agenda or anything. So, you know, that's that. Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wen. I take one to. Thank I was here to stop for working really hard. I know that. You are really patient. Work under this pandemic is not easy, a lot of challenge. But I think that our city staff, they are amazing and I really appreciate that. So with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, July twenty. Second, seven, yeah, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Nice.
Nice.
Good night.